All right, please rise for the Star Spangled Banner. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Helmut.[91.42][91.42](Applause) So we had a pretty good evening last Monday. I thought we had some really good debate. But this was the visual I wanted to give you. That's all the paper that was given to all of us this year. That's a lot of paper. Are there any town meeting members who have -- new town meeting members who have not yet been sworn in?[126.02][126.02](Crowd cheering) You gonna put it up for us? All right. Are there any new town meeting members that have not yet been sworn in? If so, please rise. Seeing none, any re-elected town -- oh! Well, we'll do everybody at once. Re-elected town meetings as well. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I will participate fully and fairly in all matters before the town meeting, and vote with the best interest of the town. I support free speech and will treat others with mutual respect. And will conduct myself in a civil manner that is becoming an elected town meeting member. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member of the Town of Arlington in accordance with the bylaws, Town Manager Act, and the general laws of commonwealth, so help me God." There were some things on the chairs. There's not supposed to be. It's also supposed to be on that table. And anything on that table is supposed to be signed. So if there's anything that's not signed, we don't know who did it, so just throw it away. If you want to give us something, sign it. If you don't have the courage to put your name on it, don't give it to us. I recognize Chairman of the Board. Ha, I almost said Board of Selectmen. The Chairman of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, April 29th, 2019, at 8:00 P.M.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? So moved. Anyone have any announcements? Mr. DeCoursey?[293.33][293.33](Waiting)
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve DeCoursey, Precinct 2, and a member of the Select Board. Just wanted to announce that the Arlington High School girls tennis team is here tonight for their bake sale. And just a quick announcement on the tennis teams. The girls' and boys' tennis teams have a combined record to this point of 12 wins and two losses. It is by far --[319.54][319.54](Cheering and applause) The girls are 4-1, and the boys are 8-1. It is by far their best record to this point since the teams joined the Middle Sex League. Please visit their bake sale and wish the girls well tomorrow. They're traveling to Lexington, and Lexington is one of the best teams in the state. Thank you.
Good luck to them. Mr. O'Connor.
James O'Connor, Precinct 19. Just a housekeeping matter. As you may be aware, in past years, you received a letter from the Clerk's office shortly after the election requesting you to meet on one of three nights after the opening of town meeting to complete this form, which has the assignment of a clerk and a chair for each precinct. Because it didn't go out, I had the assistance of our town manager to make copies. I'd like to have one person from each precinct -- oh, you have some forms, Janice? Okay, well, Janice has some forms, and I have them here. We need to have people complete them today during the break. So if each precinct could just get a quarm of their membership, we'll complete these forms so we can have them in place for the remainder of the town meeting.
Are they currently assigned locations?
Yes, 1 through 4 in that hall. 8 -- 4, or 5 through 12 in the back hall. 12, 13 through 15 upstairs at that end, and 18 through 21 down the other end.
Okay.
Okay? 1 through 4, 5 through 8, 9 through 15, and the rest of them, 16 through 21. Ms. Seuss? Here's too many of ya.
7, 7, 8, 14, 15, and 21.
They need the exercise. They can go upstairs.
Hi, Jennifer Seuss, Precinct 3, and also member of the school committee. I'd like to invite you to the Build Arlington's Future kickoff this Sunday. Sunday, April 28th, is going to be at the Elks Club, which is right by Spy Pond. 3 to 5. There'll be yummy goodies, some baked stuff. There's going to be mild babysitting, sort of a babysitter in the corner. You maybe can't to -- you know, walk away forever. We're kicking off the campaign to support the operating override for the operating override to fill the county's coffers for town and school services, and the debt exclusion for the high school. I want to thank Selectwoman Diane Mahan for her strong support in the opening statement, her opening remarks. And just to very quickly mention some of the committees that are unanimously supporting the high school project. School Committee, Select Board, Capital Planning Committee, Finance Committee, Permanent Town Building Committee, and Sustainable Arlington. Those are unanimous supports for the high school project. So 3 to 5, Sunday on the 28th, at the Elks Club. Thanks.
Is it Mr. Fiori in the back?[520.14][520.14](Waiting)
Peter Fiori, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, I have the official wooden bark measurer ceremonial kit.
Ah![538.16][538.16](Laughter and applause) So if -- If you would do us the honor of presenting it to Mr. Warden.
Yes, I know. Elsie Fiori was watching on the television, and she was shocked that you would accuse her of hoarding this kit.[553.82][553.82](Laughter) She was not. She sends her greetings, and she was glad to see the town meeting appointed Mr. Warden because she thought that the job was more appropriate for a younger man, even --[567.74][567.74](Laughter) And she says that as a 92-year-old, and even though he has less experience in town meeting than she did.[577.14][577.14](Laughter and applause)
We will be ever grateful to Mrs. Elsie Fiori for her dedication to the town and to that task. I believe, Ms. Delpha, did you have your hand up for an announcement? Ah, faked me out. Okay, let's do our clicker test. So get your clicker out, make sure they're turned on. Oh! Mr. Digham has an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm from Leonard Diggins, Precinct 3. Actually, I have breaking news coming in on my phone. ACMI has a new news director, and we're having an open house on May 2nd. And it's at 7:00 P.M. And the name of the news director is Jeff Barn, and some of you may remember him. He was an anchor here in Boston. He's a really great guy, and I really encourage everyone to come. ACMI is a great resource for the town, and it's a great way to meet your fellow residents and get to them, learn how to interact using various media. So we're welcome to the 10, May 2nd, next Thursday, 7 o'clock.
Thank you, sir. And did you have an announcement with this Lickman? Oh, sorry. All right, let's do our clicker test then. Yeah. Well, as soon as we're done with the announcements, I'll call that Charlie. So here's our question. Toy Story was the first fully CGI computer graphic imagery movie. Yes or no? Toy Story 1 was the first CGI movie. One -- so, oh. Yes is the correct answer, so 112 of us got it. Woo-hoo! Want to scroll through? And if you're having trouble connecting -- if you're having trouble connecting your devices to the network, Adam Kowalski's here. He's gonna be in the back. Oh, he's up there. He's up front. So if you're having trouble of any sort connecting your tablets or your computer, talk to Adam. He'll fix it for you. We kind of broke it the other night, which is part of the stress test, but we should be up and going good now.[738.02][738.02](Waiting) Okay, while that's scrolling through, any other announcements? Seeing none. Oh, yes, sir. Oh. So -- So Tim, do I -- I think you're truncating someone's names. They're too long. Yeah, it's an improvement.[784.34][784.34](Laughter) Oh, I see. See Tim at the break. He'll figure out a way to do it. Any -- any reports of committees?
Charles Foskett, Precinct 8. Mr. Chairman, I ask that the report of the Capital Planning Committee be received.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
The report is so received. Any other reports of committees? Sir.
Mr. Moderator, I have more paper for you. Alan Reedy, Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee. I move that the report of the committee be received.
All in favor of receiving the report of the Permanent Town Building Committee, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is received.
So town meeting members, the goal of the Permanent Town Building Committee is to deliver projects that are on time and on budget. And this year, I am pleased to report -- Can you hear me now? So this year, I'm pleased to report that our two major projects, the Gibbs School renovation project and the Hardy School addition project, were in fact brought in on time and on budget.[902.54][902.54](Applause) The Gibbs School was a -- had -- is a project that included major interior renovations, exterior or building envelope improvements. And despite rather extensive investigational testing before construction, where we tore holes in walls and tried to find all the problems, there were still a lot of major problems that we uncovered during construction, but they were addressed within the extended scope of the project. I would like to say, though, that the Gibbs School offers a bit of a cautionary tale. We've renovated a lot of buildings within town. I know that the Gibbs School has been held up as a possible example of what could be done with other large facilities in town, such as the high school project. And again, that's a debate that we'll have on Monday night. But this is a bit of a cautionary tale, too. The Gibbs School project was much more limited in scope, and we stayed within the footprint of the existing building. There were no expansions. There were no trying to take other buildings and have them match floor heights, things like that. There were, as I mentioned, there were a lot of problems uncovered during the construction process, and you just can't envision what all of those are going to be ahead of time, and some of them can be quite extensive. And then thirdly, the Gibbs School project was much less complex project than the high school will be, where we have a lot of specialized program space that will have to be constructed for that project. So we should -- we should, we do, and we should continue to renovate our historic buildings when we can. But again, we just need to be aware of the possible downside that you may find as you get into some of these projects.
Who's playing music, or the Red Sox? Please turn it off. Extremely annoying.
So the Hardy School project, a sixth classroom addition to the Hardy School, plus some exterior site renovations.
Excuse me, Mr. Reedy. Ma'am, it doesn't help to move farther away. You actually have to turn it off?
She's trying.
Just hiding doesn't help. That's not -- there you go. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Reedy.
Thank you. So the Hardy School project, a sixth classroom addition, very similar to what was done the prior year for the Thompson School, also came in on time and on budget. And then, I'm sorry, we should -- I should show you. I was told last year I talked too much and didn't show pictures. So this year, I'm gonna show pictures, and I'll try to talk less. So these are just some photos of the Gibbs School. Those of you who haven't been in the Gibbs School, the renovated Gibbs School, really should seek an opportunity to do so. It's like night and day compared to what was there before. This is the Hardy School addition. And then an interior classroom. So coming up for this coming year are two major projects. The rebuilding of the Public Works facility on Grove Street. This is a major rebuild, new build, historic build. How does it fit together with the high school project build? This will be a very complicated and probably expensive project. As many of you know, it sits on a site that has hazardous waste. It has flooding. It has sort of all the problems you can imagine. And yet, what we've seen so far for a plan for the site looks really good. And then the Central School will be helping oversee a project to renovate two floors of the Central School building, following on the very successful renovation by the Arlington Center for the Arts on the upper floors. At this time, I would like to recognize the members of the committee who meet twice a month throughout the year for what can be very long meetings and for very low pay. Many of them sit here within this enclosure. Bob Jefferson, if I could ask you just to stand as I read your name. Bob Jefferson. John Marr, out there somewhere. We have Adam Chapdeline. Michael Mason was over there before. Bill Hayner. And Steve Nesterak. Usually over there. Really special thanks this year go to the -- go to a few people I'd like to recognize. The school committee, particularly under the leadership of Superintendent Bodie and her principals for these two schools, the Gibbs School, Kristin DiFrancesco, and the Hardy School, Kate Peretz. These folks were at every meeting. They're great advocates for the schools, and yet they're also very practical in what they're asking for, and were wonderful partners in working with the committee. And I think special thanks really need to go to Steve Nesterak, the Director of Facilities for the town. He's relatively new in the job, and right when he came into the job, we were doing the Gibbs School and uncovering lots of problems. Steve stepped up. He worked very closely with the architects, the contractors, the project managers, to make sure that project really was brought in on time and on budget. And so I would like to recognize everything he did. Thank you very much.
Any other reports of committees?
Julie Brazil, Precinct 12, and Chair of the Invision Arlington Standing Committee. I move that the meeting accept the report of Invision Arlington.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is so accepted.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to report that after a year, I've almost gotten used to saying Invision Arlington instead of Vision 2020. If you're not familiar with everything that Invision Arlington does, there's our section in the annual report that the town produces has a great description of all of the work that our committees did last year. I want to call out a couple of current projects from this year. We learned from survey comments that certain aspects of the town meeting style of government did not make sense to all of the residents. Luckily, our Fiscal Resources Task Group had already compiled a series of advocate columns into a primer that outlines town government in Arlington, which is on the website, and is very helpful. They've also done a series of interviews with town leaders that shed additional light on their work, and that project is ongoing. So if anyone is interested in working on that, they can certainly contact Gordon Jamison, the Chair. The Diversity Task Group collaborates with committees and commissions and the school department throughout the year on a number of events and projects. There's one coming up on Tuesday, April 30th, at the Bracket School from 7:00 to 9:00 P.M. Dr. Lisa Tulluson, who spoke in Arlington to an audience of 180 in January, will again lead a discussion about how to talk about race and racism with our families. And finally, Sustainable Arlington hopes that you are enjoying Eco Week. There's a bunch of information, interesting projects and events, all free, going on this week. I encourage you to look that up on the town website. Sustainable Arlington is also helping to run the Arlington Winchester Heat Smart Program. So that's gonna be very interesting, and I hope you all check that out. The annual town survey went smoothly this year. We seem to be -- everyone seems to be adjusting to the online format. We had doubled the number of responses, so we're making progress. We have formed a survey working group, and one of the key functions of that group will be to continue thinking about ways to get the survey to people who aren't comfortable with the online format. We know that that's not everyone. So it's important that we think of new ways to do outreach to those who are more comfortable with a paper format or need help accessing it online. We don't have a final survey report quite done, however, I can preview this tidbit for you. Town meeting members come up a lot, because we ask questions about it. However, it's clear that town meeting members are positioned to sort of be ambassadors, to bridge the gap between residents who need more help understanding how town government works and town government. So as elected representatives, we can perform our duties best when we understand and are connected with our neighbors and their concerns and their issues. So if you're interested in working with the Governance Task Group to better engage with residents and strengthen those bonds of neighborhood and community, we would love to hear from you. We have two vacancies coming up on the Standing Committee this summer, but also plenty of opportunities to get involved in specific projects, as I've mentioned tonight, without committing to a three-year term or a formal role. The Standing Committee's mission is to find new ways for more people to contribute their ideas and feedback that shape the direction of our community through clear statements of our values and creating action plans based on current needs. All ideas and volunteers are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil.[1512.34][1512.34](Applause) Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Mr. Toasty, can you lay three upon the table?
I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
All in favor of laying three upon the table, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Article 3 is on the table. Before we get back into Article 16, let's dispose of the consent agenda. So you all have your consent agenda in front of you. I'm gonna read through the articles first on the majority vote. Then we'll take that vote, then we'll go through the two-thirds vote. If you want anything removed, please let me know which ones you want to have removed. So as soon as you're all ready. Okey-dokey. So I'm gonna read them off. Article 10. Hold. If you're putting a hold on something that's a no-action vote, I hope you have an amendment or a substitute motion. So if someone has a substitute motion for 10, we should have seen it already, but let's start again. Article 10, hold. You want to hold it? All righty. Well, you have to -- it's hold. You're gonna have to wait till we get to 10. Article 12. 13. 23. 25. 31. 43. Hold. Okay. 49. 66. 67. 69. 70. 71. 73. 74. 78. And 79. Okay, so we're gonna vote all of those at once, soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. A 1 is a yes. Yes, sir. Well, I didn't have that printed in advance, so I don't feel good doing that. So as soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, we're gonna vote on all of those articles at once. A 1 is a yes vote, a 2 is a no vote. So go ahead and vote. One for yes, two for no.[1678.74][1678.74](Waiting) 201 in the affirmative, eight in the negative. All of those are affirmative votes, and I so declare it. Now, we're gonna take the two-thirds vote articles, which are either bonding or financing that require a two-thirds vote. Article 59. Article 60. 60 is a hold. 61. 62. 63. Oh, excuse me. My dyslexia got the best of me. 72. Hold. 72, hold. 76, and 77. Mr. Toasty wants to hold that one. All right, so on 59, 61, 62, 76, we're going to vote all of those as soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. Okay, we've got our green light, 1 for yes, 2 for no. These are all two-thirds required votes. 213, the affirmative, in the affirmative, 4 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. And that disposes of those articles. That brings us back to Article 16. And the associated articles with 16. I'm going to use the moderator's prerogative and recognize Mr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andrew Brunel, Chair of the Arlington Redevelopment Board, Precinct 21. I stood here Monday night, and I told you about all of the great things that I think Articles 16, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11 can do for the town. But I also listened to the things. We also listened to the comments that came from Town Meeting intently about concerns and desire for more information as to what these articles constituted, what they did, and what they could do. I still believe that they're net positive for the town of Arlington, and so does the rest of the board. However, we had a discussion after speaking with many Town Meeting members and other members of the public over the last 40 hours or so, and have reconsidered our vote to one of no action on Articles 16, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11. That is now our recommended vote. These articles will go back to the ARB for further study and recommendation to a future Town Meeting. We encourage the people in this room and your constituents to be involved in the process as it continues and from the very beginning. I look forward to a broader discussion about what zoning can and cannot do for the town and what other ideas the members of Town Meeting would like to see come from the ARB in the next year and more and beyond. I think there's a broader conversation that has to be had about the direction of this town, and I look forward to all of your input as we continue on through these things in the next year. So again, the ARB has changed its vote after much deliberation to one of no action on Articles 6, 16, 7, 8, 9, and 11. I do want to thank all of the people that helped put these together and that helped support the messaging and the information over the last several weeks. It's an important task. We're going to reach out to you to continue on with these efforts in the next several weeks as we begin this discussion or continue this discussion on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Hey, 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 hey. That's not fair. That just, it's, so, we now have no-action votes on 6, 7, as he just said, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11 and 16. That leaves on 16, the only surviving, the only surviving issue on 16 is Mr. Gersh has a substitute motion, which would be substituted for the recommended vote of the ARB of no action. So Mr. Gersh, seeing as you have that substitute motion, I'm going to give you a chance to get up and give us your opinion of what you would wish to do with your substitute.
John Gersh, Precinct 18, well, I didn't see that coming.[823.69][823.69](laughter). But in a sense, the substitute motion has one, because now we're talking about the inclusionary zoning bylaw, and if you want to discuss that on its merits, well, stick up your hand. But I say, you know, hey, that may be good for Arlington.
So are you leaving it on the table? Okay.
I never know what table means.
Well, we're talking about it, and we're going to vote on it. Okay. So I'm going to start a new list. Let's see. Mr. Pelosi, you had your hand up. Did you wish to address the article? Did you have your hand up? If you don't, okay. Mr. Revellack's next, and the gentleman next to him. Did you have Steve? You want to get up and talk? Yeah.
Steve Revellack, 111 Sunnyside Avenue, Precinct 1. So this time around, I have a, Mr. Schlickman has his hand up.
Yep, I got Mr. Schlickman.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I thought, I thought you were trying to get somebody's attention. Oh, okay, all right, you're, you're trying to get his attention. Got it, got it.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Sir.
I believe Mr. Paluso was called ahead of him.
Yeah, but he, he, okay, well, we'll.
He did not answer the first question after you, I guess.
He didn't.
But I believe he does want to.
Okay, I'll take him right after Mr. Revellack.
First.
Okay, so, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, I actually have a couple of questions. So regarding, just, we'll stick with inclusionary zoning since that's sort of the topic.
That's the only topic.
That is the only topic. So in terms of our IZ law, would it, my understanding of how it works is that an affordable unit means that the person living in it pays no more than 30% of their income for housing, and they are, it's basically geared, oriented toward someone making 60% of the area median income for rental units and 70% of the area median income for owner-occupied units. Is that, is that an accurate summation? And it applies to projects of six units or more. Now, I understand that the article, that our IZ laws were, bylaw was passed in 2001, and in that time, we've created a total of 54 units out of a total of five projects. I'm wondering if anyone on the ARB would be willing to speak why the number of projects has been so few?
Do you have any answers to that?
Or the Planning Department? Why only five?
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development for the town of Arlington. The reason why there are so few units, actually, the bylaw itself got off to a pretty slow start. It picked up speed in about 2012, when we added the majority of units to the bylaw, as part of the bylaw. So from the Brigham Square development and the Arlington 360, those were the two developments that brought on the most units. And so those two happened to be, you know, in recent history, but early on, it did not pick up many units. It had about a handful of condominium units, handful of rental units, but all of the other units that came on most recently are rental units. So why hasn't it picked up more? We haven't had a lot, a lot of large-scale development or development enough that would trigger the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Okay, so basically, just not projects of six units or more?
Correct.
Are there a lot of projects of five units going on in the town?
There are not that many projects of five units going on in the town. The only one that recently occurred is 887 Mass Ave and then 483 Summer Street.
Okay, so it's, so it's not just not six, it's also not five.[1065.12][1065.12](laughter). I won't, because I haven't, I didn't, I'm not trying to, I didn't give you, give you the luxury of, of having these questions beforehand, so I know you're, you're doing your best off from recollection, and I admire that, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. But that's, I think that does it. So it's, they're basically, we're not getting affordable units through our inclusionary zoning because there are not projects of that scale being built. Is that an accurate summation?
There are not projects of that scale being built to trigger the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Paluso, thank you very much, Mr. Revellack.
Ted Paluso, Precinct Number 6. I've lived in eight different towns, and I have to tell you that this is the best town of all. Now, the reason why you have all these problems is because it's a great town. Okay, so let's not forget that. People want to come here. There was an article in the Boston Globe on Sunday that said, according to Redfin's, this town rated 98 out of 100, which was the number-one town in the Boston area, as being a hot town. Okay, so now, next, and I may have to leave the town after I talk to you.[1161.01][1161.01](laughter). First of all, I think we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to the Arlington Redevelopment Board. Now, I know there's a lot of people in this room, and I've seen a lot of stuff come, come through Arlington list and elsewhere, and I've had people talk to me, but I have to tell you, every town I lived in, including this one, and this was the best, there were three different batches of people. People who didn't want anything happening in the town, the NIMBYs. People who wanted the town to grow, didn't want it to stay the way it is. They wanted it to grow, and I happen to believe growth is a good thing. And people who said, okay, we'll do something different, we'll have a lot of growth, but that's probably not the answer. Now, I'm going to give you a quick view of what I think is going to happen here. First of all, you're across the street from Cambridge, whether we want to recognize it or not. We are across the street from Somerville, both of which are growing by leaps and bounds from what I can see. It's growing the Boston area, and you've got a really hot area. So the question is, how do you deal with that as a town? Well, I honestly don't believe you're going to succeed, you're going to succeed in keeping things the way they were. Whether you change zoning laws, don't change zoning laws, they're going to find reasons to make it different, and the reasons are going to be from people who want to live here. Accordingly, if that's going to happen, and maybe, probably never happens in my lifetime, but it'll happen in some of your lifetimes, okay? If that's going to happen, the best thing in the world you could do is plan for it. So accordingly, to say, we don't want it to happen, I think that's very nice if you could do that, but you can't do it. That's not the real world, in my opinion. Accordingly, I believe that the Arlington Redevelopment Board, going back and looking at it and taking some of the comments that are here and working it on again, is a very good idea, but please don't come up with the conclusion of we shouldn't make any changes. I don't particularly like the building that was built next to Stop &amp; Shop myself. It seems to me it was built under the President's zoning laws, I guess. So that's an interesting question, right? If they could get that built under the President's zoning laws, maybe you should have some changes. The other thing that I want to point out, and I think this is important, and I did ask a question of one of the select people tonight. I believe after the Arlington Redevelopment Board rethinks this thing, there are a minimum of six people in this room that were elected by the public. Everybody else in this room was elected by a precinct, I think, and the precinct, maybe you got 100 votes, maybe you got 50 votes, 200 votes, whatever you got. But behind me are five selectmen and one, and one town moderator. Those six people were elected by the town. I know that only 19% of them vote, but they were still elected by the town. I would like to suggest that when all is said and done, and you go back to this whole thing again, and hopefully, it won't be a year from now, please, don't wait a year. Things will happen in a year that you won't want to happen. When you go back a year to this, I really believe those six people should express some sort of an opinion on what they think should be done. It doesn't have to be an official opinion, they could express it individually, but in all honesty, everything that I looked at in the last day or two, I couldn't find a single reference from the, quote, "town leadership, including the Finance Committee," which is fascinating. So the Finance Committee, which has power, that's quite a bit, and the select people will have power, and the moderator will have power, I guess I'd kind of like to hear what they feel about all of it when it's all said and done. So that's my suggestion. Doesn't have to change the rules, I'm told that that's not what they do when you have an ARB kind of thing, but I think they should give us some guidance here, and that's what I'm suggesting. So I'll see you around soon, okay? Take care yourself.[1491.12][1491.12](applause).
Thank you, Mr. Paluso. The gentleman right here, yes. I got, you're on the list? I got to say one thing. You raise your hand, I pointed to, I've recognized you. It doesn't mean you're going to be the next person called. It means you get on the list, so you have to have a little patience. Thank you, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Daniel Jalke, Precinct 6. I move to terminate debate on Article 16 and all matters before it.
We have motion to terminate debate on Article 16 and all matters before it. It's been seconded, we're going to take a vote, takes a two-third vote to terminate debate, as soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. And go ahead and vote. 1, yes, to terminate debate, 2, to discuss it. 166 in the affirmative, 55 in the negative. It is a two-third vote, and I so declare, debate is terminated, terminated. So we now have before us the recommended vote of the ARB, which has been substituted by Mr. Gersh's vote. So first, we're going to vote on Mr. Gersh's substitute. If you want Mr. Gersh's substitute vote to become the main vote, please vote yes, 1 for yes, 2 for no. If you don't like Mr. Gersh's, vote no. If you like it, vote yes. So as soon as Mr. Lathwood is ready. So all in favor of Mr. Gersh's, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Just needs a majority vote to substitute. It's a negative vote. It does not pass. That leaves us with the recommended vote of the ARB of no action. All in favor of no action, please, as soon as Tim's ready. Did you get the vote? It's terminated.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Is this no action on?
16, then we're going to go back and start with 6 and go forward. So all in favor of no action on Article 16, please press 1 for yes, as soon as we're ready.
How do you get your voice votes in?
Yeah, I can. I just wanted to do it for this one. At the 208, in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, no action passes. Okay, so we're going to go back to 6. So we're going to take voice votes for these no actions. All in favor of no action on Article 6, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
It's a near-unanimous vote. All in favor of no action on 7, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
All in favor of no action on number 8, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Near-unanimous. All in favor of no action on number 9, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Near-unanimous. All in favor of no action on number 11, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
A near-unanimous vote. No action carries on all five of those. Mr. Toasty, can you do me a favor and take 10, 12, 14, and 15 off the table, please?
I move that we take Articles 10. I'm sorry, which were the other ones?
10, 12, 14, and 15.
12, 14, and 15 off the table.
All in favor moving 10, 12, 13, and 14, and 15 off the table, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Those are back on the table, which now brings us to Article 10. Sir.
We voted on.
We voted on six, seven, eight, nine. Oh, which was on the table.
Ten.
Okay, hold on. I've got to make my notes here. Yes, we did. We voted on 10, 12, 13. No, no one, yes, someone held 10.
Ten was held.
10 was held. So, good, that brings 10 up. 12 and 13. Oh, so you're saying because they were on the table, we couldn't vote for them? I understand your point. We just disposed of six, seven, eight, nine, and 11. We disposed...
Timori Yontar, Precincts 7. My question, Mr. Moderator, is regarding Mr. Tosti putting Article 12 back on the table when he had already disposed of it by the consent agenda.
Correct, and the same with 13. So, I guess we can vote them again because they were on the table.
Do you really want to vote on them twice, sir?
So, we put them on the table last meeting. I didn't take them off the table to vote on the consent agenda, but we voted on them, so technically, we should take them off the table and vote again. Or, at the prerogative of the meeting, we could say, "We're good."
We're good.
Mr. Deist.
I have to tell you that, John Deist, Precinct 13. I have to tell you, I'm not comfortable with this consent agenda process. It's all gone a little bit too fast for me, anyway. I don't know about the rest of you, but when all those numbers were called out, and I hadn't looked, and maybe that's my fault, I should have looked carefully about what was possibly going to be on the consent agenda. But when all those numbers were called out, I didn't get the chance to go through and see if I wanted to hold any of them. So, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, Mr. Moderator, with this process right now, and it would be good if we could slow down a little bit, if you still want to do a consent agenda, so that we can have time to look at the articles. Thank you.
We are learning about the consent agenda as we go. As you know, it is new from last year, and...
So, let's do a small...
Okay. All right, well, first, we don't actually have anything before us right now, so we have Article 10. You want to put your point of order?
So, Mr. Moderator, this is Raina Mevin from Precinct 21. I thought we just voted on Article 16, six, seven, eight, and 11, but you keep mentioning Article 9 is being voted on, so I need a clarification.
Mr. Benel, you put no action on 9, correct? Yes. He made a no-action vote on 9.
He did?
Yes.
I don't remember voting on that one. All right, thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a little raise the volume a little bit on all mics? Something happened to the box.
Oh. Hold on a second. Hey, Sean, do you know how to raise the volume on the mics? I'm asking the Acme guy. Norm's not here, he usually is the one who plays with it, but if Sean...
I get feedback.
Oh, you get feedback?
It just sounds quieter than the Acme.
Well, if they have to speak, right into it real close.
I'll see if I can... But he gets feedback, he says.
Gabe's going to try.
The tape is shut.
Oh, it's taped shut. So, you have to get right up close to the mic. All right, that brings us to Article 10. Do you wish to address it? Oh, it's a no action? Yes. Recommended vote on 10 is also no action. All in favor of no action on Article 10, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? No action. That closes Article 10. The next article we have open is 14. They were on the consent agenda, 12 and 13. Article 14 is now before us.
Good evening again. Andrew Benel, Chair of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. I think we have slides on this. Wait a minute here. Thank you. Good evening. Article 14 involves transportation demand management applicability in business districts in high-density residential zones. TDM was adopted in the 2016 Town Meeting as Section 6.15 of the zoning bylaw. Again, this applies to business districts, industrial districts, and multifamily residential districts, R5 and R6. We allow for a reduction in off-street parking requirements when certain methods to reduce parking are included. We ask business owners and management companies to provide alternative plans for their residents and employees to get to work, essentially. Things like bicycle parking, alternatives to car use, encouragement of using public transportation, walking, et cetera. We've actually found that this has been an extremely successful program in all of these districts. The original intent of this amendment in 2016 was also to include the R7 district, which is what this bylaw amendment is intended to achieve, adding in that district to the TDM reductions. Voting yes on this will make that simple administrative correction to include all high-density residential districts along with the business and industrial zones that already exist. Thank you.
Marion King, Precinct 1. My big concern is regarding people who are of low income having difficulty not having enough parking. Often, families who are of low income actually need more cars per household because they have jobs and school which require them to get places that mass transit does not get to easily. People who are caregivers, many other types of jobs that just are not on transit routes. I am glad that there is... What number is it? 79? That we have passed on the consent agenda that does allow for overnight street parking with special permission. But first of all, they need to know that, and I fear that a lot of people will get a lot of tickets before they figure that out. And it's somewhat unfair that someone would have to park on the street and get special permission and not have enough parking spaces provided for them in a multifamily development that they live in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. Generally speaking, I am in favor of lowering the demands that developers add parking to development in Arlington because I believe that our town will be a nicer place to live if we reduce the demand for traffic and cars and we increase the opportunity for people to take public transit, ride bicycles, walk on our beautiful bike path, walk on our beautiful redesigned Mass Avenue, hopefully walk on our beautiful redesigned Arlington Heights neighborhood some point. And I'm sympathetic to the idea that some people need more cars, that some people are stuck in a rental situation or in a homeownership situation where they don't have enough parking spaces to suit the situation that they're in. But I believe that putting that specific problem on the zoning regulations so that everybody in town who wants to build any development, a house or apartment building or whatever, for any purpose, has to consider the possibility that everybody might want to have, frankly, in my opinion, too many cars is not an appropriate use of the zoning law. And I think that if that is an issue, that people in this town are stuck in situations where they do not have the parking that facilitates them thriving in our town, then we should address that through different measures. Thank you.
Yeah, McCabe.
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. I'm sorry, I don't know this, but it's going to reduce... Get out of there. It's going to reduce it to 25% of that required in the table of off-street parking regulations. Is that the 1.5 per bedroom? What is 25% of what?
Ms. Rate or Mr. Benel?
It's 25... Andrew Benel, ARB. It's 25% of the total parking space is required.
Yeah, but how many parking spaces are required? I'm not that familiar with the original...
It depends on... So, it's 25% of the total amount of parking that is required in the table of off-street parking regulations that's already included in the zoning bylaw. So, it would depend on bedrooms per unit.
How many parking spaces are required per unit?
Depends on how many bedrooms.
It's a function of the number of bedrooms. The more bedrooms, the more spaces.
I can't vote on this until I understand this. I mean...
So, if he had three bedrooms, how many spaces would he need?
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. For a studio and one bedroom, it's... Or, studio, rather, it's one car. For one bedroom, it's 1.15 cars. For two bedrooms, it's 1.5 cars. And for three bedrooms or more, it is two cars per unit.
Okay. Is this in R5, R6, R7? So, this is going to be limited to multi-unit buildings?
Yes.
Just a comment. It's odd to me that I believe, and I think she may speak. I'm aware of one single-family house that, in order to get permission to add an in-law apartment, she had to make arrangements to rent two spaces from the town, even though she was just going to require no cars be allowed. So, I wish there was a way to address that also. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I want to make sure we know what we're... I want to make sure we know what we have on the books already and what we're voting on. So, Mr. Moderator, through you, to perhaps Ms. Rate, which zones already have this applicable to them?
Mr. Benel, oh, Ms. Rate's going to take it.
R5 and R6, as well as the business districts. They currently have this, and the industrial zone. So, those are the current zones that were adopted in 2016 that have the transportation demand management... Sorry, Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And R5 and R6 are described in zoning bylaws as what?
The higher-density residential zones.
Which are apartments?
Which are multifamily buildings. They already have multifamily buildings on them right now.
And it doesn't include R4?
It does not include R4, no.
Which is lower-density apartments?
It's townhouses.
Townhouses, okay. So, this is only for basically apartments, multifamily, high-density?
Right. R7 is the highest-density zone in our zoning bylaw. And it actually is only three parcels in town. Two of them are Housing Authority parcels, and one of them is Housing Corporation for Arlington.
Okay. And other than the business and 5, 6, and 7, are there any other zones that are included?
No, it is. It's just the business districts, R5 and R6.
Okay. So, if you remember the map we had up here...
Industrial, I'm sorry.
We had that map we had up the other day. Can I have the third slide, Mr. Good?
Excuse me, sir?
I have some slides.
Oh, Dave.
Yes.
Trying to find them.
So, while he gets that, 75% of the land, or the mass of Arlington is residential. None of this applies to that. It only applies to a subset of those parcels. It doesn't include R4, which is townhouses, and I don't know which ones those are, but this is less than 8% of the land of Arlington this applies to. And all but R7, which is the three units that Ms. Rate discussed, are already covered by this thing. So, just want to make sure what we're voting on. I have a question on the... By adding... This was added two years ago to our zoning bylaws. What has the general impact been? Perhaps Mr. Benel or Ms. Rate might comment? If that's okay with you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
If you didn't know, Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Good to see you again.
Yes, thank you. You, too. What has it done so far? It has been very useful, actually, because we've been... The ARB has been able to permit developments that want to have a lower ratio of cars parked on-site. They also want to access opportunities for bike shares or other bike parking facilities, sometimes transportation vouchers to their employees. So, it's happened at the Learn to Grow facility, which is on Broadway, for example. Two of the developments that were permitted that relate to the Housing Corporation of Arlington, pretty much every single one of the mixed-use developments that have occurred which includes Summer Street, 887 Mass Ave, as we've all grown to hear about, and other projects, basically ever since 2016, when this was adopted, and it's been utilized ever since, which has meant that the ratio of parking has been reduced on-site significantly.
To the betterment of the town.
To the betterment of the town.
In your opinion.
In my opinion, and also to the opinion of the property owners. And in the decision-making that occurs by the Redevelopment Board, there is the option to, one, we study the impact of the TDM on-site over the course of a year after it's adopted, and the decision is made. And then, two, the property owner has the option to come back to the board to discuss whether or not they actually need to increase parking on-site or make any other adjustments with the TDM plan that was approved at the time of the decision.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, I'm strongly in favor of this, and hope you'll join me in voting positively towards this article. Thank you.
John Deist, Precinct 13. Now, move the question on this article.
Motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
It is a two-thirds vote, and I so declare. We now have before us the recommended vote of the ARB to add R7. Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, we'll take a vote. One, yes, positive. All in favor of the recommended vote, please press one for yes. 181 in the affirmative, 34 in the negative. It passes. It's an affirmative vote, and I so declare. It's an affirmative vote, and I so declare that ends Article 14. Brings us to Article 15. Mr. Benel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Good, I think we have some slides. Good evening again. I'm almost done. Andrew Benel, Chair of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. Article 15 involves accessory dwelling units. The Housing Production Plan identifies the need to develop a range of housing types. These include accessory dwelling units. This is one method of increasing senior housing and small, low-income housing opportunities here in Arlington. Provide flexible solutions for housing, diversify options without changing the physical character of neighborhoods. The way this zoning bylaw amendment is written is it would only apply to properties able to accommodate an ADU prior to February 14th of this year. That will prevent new homes from going up with extra additions that would allow for, essentially, two families in a single-family zoned neighborhood. Would also have to show that there would be a means to accommodate that prior to, we would accommodate certain restrictions and certain oversight as well from Inspeccional Services and the Fire Department. This is a program that's been tested in other similar neighborhoods, similar towns, to Arlington, and what's been found is that although they work, the impact is minimal. There aren't many houses or options that really want to take advantage of this program, but it's an important program to move forward because of the opportunity for additional housing options in town. It allows people to downsize, it allows people to have in-laws, stay with them, and help with childcare, and it has a minimal impact on neighborhood. The increase in cars, foot traffic, and services is negligible. So 2018, a Pioneer Institute study found that 37 municipalities of 100 in the greater Boston area allow these apartments and allow rental to persons other than a family or caretaker. Typically, they would have to be smaller than 750 square feet, provide two means of egress, and have working facilities for the person renting the unit. An ADU is proposed to be a secondary unit. It's an additional unit to a single-family home already existing. It would be contained within an existing owner-occupied residential structure in the RO and R1 districts. And again, this applies only to properties where the footprint existed prior to February 14th of 2019. So again, new homes that would include these as an addition wouldn't be a possibility under this particular zoning bylaw amendment. Again, they're only allowed in single-family dwellings. And again, the lockdown date there is described. They are not allowed in detached structures. We're not recommending that people be able to turn out buildings or garages into an ADU. It's simply to those buildings that can afford to accommodate it. They're only allowed by special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals. They are considered part of the original property and cannot be sold without it. A one-year lease with no subletting allowed. The lease would have to be placed on file with the department, and they would be subject to annual certification that the property is being used for its intended purpose as an ADU, or that it's reverted back to its prior use as an addition. This increases safety, and it increases enforcement in town. It enables tracking by Inspeccional Services, Fire Department, other public safety authorities within town. There were a lot of discussion about this as we went through the process of vetting these zoning bylaw articles and through discussion in the board. I think there was concern that use would prompt teardowns and allow for single-family homes to be built with an additional 750 square foot intended as an ADU. That's why we added in the lockdown date of February 14th, so that that's not a possibility to come through. Both units will become rentals if not owner-occupied. That's another requirement there, and units will be conveyed separately. These are not possible under the existing zoning bylaw. There'd have to be regular certification, there'd have to be an examination of the lease, the lease would have to be kept on file. This would be regular permitted use. And again, we don't expect a large number of requests, a large number of special permits to be filed. Research shows about 2.5 permits annually where ADUs are allowed. That's 2.5 homes per year that would add to this, a really minimal addition to any given R1 or R0 neighborhood. Based on the Housing Production Plan and the group furthering that, we've decided to put this forward to town meeting. We think it's a valuable resource available to those who have the resources to accommodate it, to provide for an additional diversity of housing stock in town. Primarily, these would be used as senior housing and affordable housing because by their nature, small A, affordable housing, I should say, because by their nature and their size, they are fairly limited as far as their markets go. But again, we believe that this provides a valuable asset to the town, and I hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mahan?
Rising as a town meeting member, Precinct 14, Diane Mahan. I'm not sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I was just trying to do some figures in my head. RO and R1, does that mean about 6,000, 5,998 under RO and R1 would, would be the number that this would affect?
Yes, we're getting head nods in the affirmative.
Okay. And I guess, starting from backwards, I'm just doing the numbers and I'm thinking of the impact, so I'm going to say what my concerns are, and then through the moderator, anyone who can answer that. I understand that you say the research is about 2.5 permits for the, these units. I'm wondering if you compared it to a town like Arlington that has close to 6,000 units? And the reason I say that is if 10% go, 10% of the 6,000 apply for the special permit process, that could be up to 600 special permits over whatever amount of year or years. If we go with an even smaller, that's 5%, that's 300 special permits. And you have the ZBA right now, which really probably sees 15 to 18 special permits per year, and that's really, you know, they can handle that, but I see large numbers there, so I don't know where the 2.5 comes. And then the other thing is, I'm wondering if there has been any consideration, and I'm sure there has, and I just haven't been able to glean it, in terms of what the requirements would be for fire escapes, what the impact would be on the town water system when it has to be connected up to that, as well as natural gas. So I just want to know if there's any, I know you put up, research shows 2.5 permits per year, and I rarely see it being more. So I'm wondering if anyone can answer any of those questions. Thank you.
Ms. Rate's going to give us a good idea.
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. We believe, based upon that research, that there would be a limited number of applicants because there are a limited number of applicants in other communities that currently have the same type of zoning bylaw adopted. The accessory dwelling unit bylaw is very common. The one that we are, that's being proposed is one that is, is pretty restrictive in terms of what you have to do to meet that bylaw. So you actually, it has to be completely internal to the unit. There wouldn't be a fire escape. Everything would actually be internal to the building, and the only thing that might be added is a door leading out as a second means of egress. So there wouldn't be an exterior modification like a fire escape or something to that nature. Through the Zoning Board of Appeals' special permitting process, there would be an evaluation of any impact on water or gas or any other utilities because of that special permitting process and the requirement to fulfill all of the criteria through that process. They would evaluate any impact on the kinds of things that you're talking about, including the visual impact in the neighborhood, should there be any. So the only way that there could be any potential visual impact, not, not to a fire escape, but if there was somebody with disabilities who needed some further modification for improved livability, the Zoning Board of Appeals could take that up as part of their application and special permitting process. But in terms of the number of units, that number is based upon the research that we looked into, the surrounding communities that have it in place, and what we've proposed. The last point I want to make really quickly is that we think it will be pretty cost-prohibitive to even attempt to design something of what this would be, need to be in order to meet all of the requirements. So that alone might limit the number overarching.
One follow-up real quickly, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Rate. I'm just wondering, you've answered every, I'm not wondering this, she has answered every question but one. When you say we compared it to comparable communities, was it comparable, comparable communities that have put this in place, but was it comparable that the number could be up to 6,000, 5,998, to be exact?
Oh, you mean in terms of the number of single-family homes? Yes, comparable in terms of the number of single-family homes, if not more, in fact. In some of those communities, it's much more because they're, they're larger communities overarching. So yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rate. Mr. Rudeman?
Michael Rudeman, Precinct 9. There is an elaborate schedule of restrictions that accompany this year's proposal for accessory dwelling units. These are different from the proposals that we've seen in this meeting at least twice before in the last eight years, when accessory dwelling units were previously proposed and voted down by this meeting both of those times. I'd like to ask you, Mr. Moderator, who enforces this long list of, of restrictions and requirements on the construction and use of accessory dwelling, dwelling units?
Would that be Mr. Inspeccional Service Department?
Okay.
Mr. Byrne and his crew.
Thank you. Second question. Should I think that my home would qualify for this, and I wish to do it? Would I have to affirmatively state on the request for the building permits that that was in fact my intention? In other words, how does the enforcing authority in the town know that I wish or intend or have, through some other means, you know, started using a piece of the property that I own as an accessory dwelling unit? How does the town know that there are rules which need to be enforced?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Rate. I think they have to put it in their special permit. Go ahead, tell, give us a good idea.
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. You have to follow, file an application. At the time of application, it would be clear that you are applying for an accessory dwelling unit, and through that process and the application, which is for a special permit, that then goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There would be a decision made, and then any respective decision would have to be enforced by Inspeccional Services. After that, maybe Inspeccional Services can answer anything further.
I only have one more question, Mr. Moderator. If I didn't ask for the special permit and did it anyway, or did it anyway without a building permit or a special permit request, what is the penalty?
Mr. Byrne? If you'd go ahead and build stuff, you're not supposed to without a permit.
Good evening. Michael Byrne, Director of Inspeccional Services. The building code allows up to $1,000 a day per violation.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rudeman. Mr. Quinn? Mike?
Michael Quinn, town meeting member, Precinct 10, and a member of the Board of the Council on Aging. I want to say just at the beginning, I'm generally strongly in favor of the idea of in-law apartments. They've come before us a couple of times, and each time, they've gone down for various reasons. I think the reasons that, you know, people have a lot of concerns about these things, this is a, somebody's major asset, it's a, potentially a large change for the town. When this article came out and a couple of the other articles came out, I took it upon myself to try to learn a bit about this so that we could talk about it at a Council on Aging meeting. And so I watched the March 8th, 2019 Residential Study Group, one-hour meeting that was held on this. They put it up on YouTube. It's got less than 100 views so far, so it's not really burning up the internet. You can watch it in sped-up mode, and then it takes less than an hour. At the beginning of the meeting, my, my sense of that meeting, and again, I'm not on the Residential Study Group, and I wasn't there, my sense of it was, at the beginning of the meeting, there were both proponents of the idea of the specific article and some people who I think were just against it entirely. By the end of that meeting, there was no disagreement among anybody who was saying anything, other than that Article 15, as written, as it was presented on March 8th, was just fatally flawed. At the end of the discussion, they reached something that they said was, that they took a unanimous, they took a vote of non-approval, and the vote was unanimous, pending much further study. And so, at the Council on Aging meeting that was held, you know, a week or so later, when we talked about the articles that would come, that would come before town meeting that might affect seniors, and so this one, we definitely think is something that it would potentially be of interest to seniors. The three reasons the Redevelopment Board gives for, or who might be interested in this is allowing people to age in place, allowing to have a caretaker unit, and rental income. And so I think all three of these are something that certainly are of interest to seniors. But by the end of that meeting, it was clear that what was presented was not going to pass. And so, when we talked about it at the, at our meeting, we said, you know, maybe this will come back, but it seems to be gone. On April 8th, I guess it's when the Redevelopment Board came out, the new, the newer version of this came out. I am not aware that the same process of vetting has been followed. I don't, to my knowledge, they have not met with the Residential Study Group again, and I'll admit, I'm not a zoning expert, so when I look at this, and I don't know how it would work out for us, and certainly those are the questions that I get from everybody I talk to about it. How would it work? How do we know it would work? And what if it doesn't work? In particular, if you write a set of laws and regulations, what can people, what's the most people can do to be consistent with the letter of the law and totally violate the spirit of it? And that's the concern people have. And I don't know enough about what's in this current article to be in favor of it. And if I'm not, if I can't be in favor of it, I've got to oppose it and hope that it, we take some more time, do this right, get it vetted by, by the Residential Study Group or some other group of people who will push back on these suggestions, and also, frankly, reach out more to people. When I talked to seniors about these, this proposal, there was very little awareness of it, and I get the sense that there hasn't been a lot of outreach done to particular interested groups. And I think that would both help, maybe get more than two and a half units a year, which also makes me wonder, if we're only going to get two and a half units a year, why are we doing this? I mean, that's, that's not going to move the needle much on doing that. If it's going to be cost prohibitive, maybe there's a better way we can do this. And I have to admit, I don't know if, if there is, it's something, that's not something that I can say that I know how to fix this. But where I am with this now, and we're looking at it, is just that this is, it could be a very important and useful development for the town, but what's here hasn't been properly vetted. If we put something in place, that could, it could prove problematic trying to pull it back. And I hope to see this again in a future year. I don't have enough faith in this article as it's currently written and presented to us, and the process that's been followed since the 8th of March without a meeting with the Residential Study Group in order to, to, to vote in favor of it. And so I ask you to vote no action on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Klein? Timeout. Oh, you want to take your break? All right, it's 9:30. Take a 10-minute break. We'll come back, we'll start directly, and Mr. Klein will have the floor. Mr. Klein, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Precinct 10.
Quiet, please. Mr. Klein has the floor.
So I'm, I'm torn on this. This has come up several times. I have been a, a strong proponent of this on several occasions. Mr. Moderator, I have a question that I would like to you to forward. On what percentage of land in town is dedicated to R0 and R1?
Ms. Rate knows that off the top of her head.
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. 70%.
70%.
Seven zero.
Seven zero. Thank you. So, up to now, we've been talking a lot about affordable housing and how we improve affordable housing in a very small percentage of town. If we want to democratize affordable housing in town, we have to find a way to take advantage of 70% of the land area in this town. Currently, we do nothing to, to encourage it in the, in the residential districts because it's extremely hard to do. This is an opportunity. So if we're serious about adding affordable housing, we need to find a way So, if we're serious about adding affordable housing, we need to find a way to, to try to introduce it into the R not and the R1 districts. There are very good, there are very good projects that have been included in this, but it's a difficult thing to do. But this is a slightly easier way to go. However, there are a lot of issues in doing this. And, Mr. Moderator, I did want to ask if they, if someone could speak on any concerns from the emergency services perspective.
Chief Jefferson, he has a question for you.
Robert Jefferson, Fire Chief. Just to clarify, there was questions asked earlier in the meetings, that were the public meetings that were being held, and it was mentioned that there were concerns from the Fire Department. At that time, the concerns I had as your Fire Chief was that the final language hadn't been done, and it was hard for us to discern, you know, how this would affect us. That being said, I did bring up a couple of concerns with the town manager in a, in a meeting last week. Those concerns dealt with address issues. When public safety, whether it be police, fire, EMS, are responding to, if there was one of these accessory dwelling units, and the address was 123 Main Street, is the same address for both units, that's a concern of ours, that we need to know exactly where we're responding. We don't want to lose time responding to the front of 123 Main Street when that accessory unit or that emergency may be at a, at a different location. From what I understand, and, and someone can address it, I believe that's going to be addressed as far as a separate address for each unit. Haven't seen that, but I understand it will be addressed. And the other concern from a fire protection or an EMS point of view is that we currently respond all over town. We have to adapt to wherever we go. But we do, we do respond with a pretty standardized, if we're going to Cape, a ranch, a colonial in an R0 and R1 district, we kind of know what we're responding to. We go to a two-family, a three-family, we kind of expect what we're, we're going to respond to. Naturally, we run into a lot of stuff that we're not expecting. That's our job, to adapt and overcome and improvise. But as far as a concern, that would be one concern, that as we, as we respond to these units, we may not have a clear picture of exactly what we're responding to. It was stated that through today's technology, some of that could be handled. That's really not the case. We don't have that technology on our pieces. We respond somewhere between three to four minutes at our longest response in town, and we're not looking at computers, dispatch is pretty busy, so we're not always going to get that information prior to us getting our arrival.
In your opinion, are these concerns, are they surmountable?
We could, we can deal with anything.
I have no doubts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator, an apologies to the Inspectional Services. I had just wanted to ask a, a question in regards to how difficult it would be to build a code-compliant two-family unit in an existing single-family unit?
Mr. Byrne?
Michael Byrne, Director of Inspectional Services. Normally, I might ask Christian, that being the architect that he is, but to, I, I guess step back just a little bit. Some of the questions or phone calls we've received have been people thinking maybe they can just put a door in and throw a kitchenette in there and a bathroom and have this. It gets a little more than that when we get into the building code. I'm not here to speak for or against. I just, I think it's important that people understand what, 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 what is going to be involved. You're talking a one-hour fire rating completely around, around this unit. You know, that's 5/8 sheet rock, type X, I don't want to get too far into this, inside and out, et cetera, for the whole thing. Two means of egress. You know, normally what we do is, when we have these issues, you know, is the water main going to be big enough? Is the gas service going to be big enough? Et cetera. You know, again, they're all surmountable. They're all, you know, for me, it's just important that people understand that, that we're going into this. So, that there is a little bit to it. Yeah, so I think, if that answers your question.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. So, it is possible to do this. It does take some work, and the safety is paramount in these situations. As Mr. Byrne mentioned, I am a practicing architect in the Commonwealth. I'm also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I don't speak on behalf of the Board. So, basically, what this will do is give an opportunity for us to create some units in an area that typically is devoid of these kinds of units, increase our land area that is being utilized to support affordable housing. And it's going to be something that has to be done through Inspectional Services, who will make, who will, you know, be responsible for inspecting these during construction, making sure that all the systems are in place, that these units are correct. And it'll be up to the Zoning Board of Appeals to review these on a case-by-case basis. Should this pass, I'm sure the Zoning Board will be very excited to, to look at these cases. But when we're reviewing town budgets, and you're reviewing Number 16, which is for ZBA and Number 21 for Inspectional Services, just take a look at the numbers and think of what we're, what we're working with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rowe, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Ms. Pyle?
My name is Elizabeth Pyle. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 10 and a member of the town's Residential Study Group, which examines the impact of zoning changes and new construction in the residential districts. The ARB referred Article 15 to the Residential Study Group for review and analysis. On March 8, we met to discuss Article 15. The Residential Study Group identified many areas of concern with this article. We felt there were too many problems with it, and that it had the potential to lead to unintended consequences. As a result, the Residential Study Group voted unanimously that Article 15 was not ready to come before town meeting this year, and that it needed additional study and modification, and that it should be postponed a year so that it could be further reviewed. Unfortunately, the ARB ignored our recommendation and is asking you to approve it tonight. They also never came back to us for a second look at it or asked our opinion at the final part of when this article was put forward. I disagree with the ARB's recommended vote, and I'm going to explain some of the concerns about Article 15 identified by the Residential Study Group. I'm also asking that you vote no on the article, so it can be put off for a year and further studied to make sure that it works well for Arlington and does not have unintended consequences. I'm not saying that there should never be accessory dwelling units in Arlington. I'm saying that this article is not ready to be approved now because there are too many problems with it, and it needs more work. And here's why. From my perspective, the biggest problem with Article 15 is the likelihood that accessory dwelling units will be used for Airbnb and other short-term rentals, coupled with the lack of tools for Inspectional Services to enforce it and to make sure that abuses do not occur. A private accessory unit with a separate entrance and kitchen facilities is likely to be used as a short-term rental, particularly given Arlington's proximity to Boston and the T. Because landlords can make more money on short-term Airbnb rentals than they can on a traditional year-long lease, some landlords will rent the accessory dwelling units on Airbnb and similar websites, even though they are not supposed to do so. These short-term rentals are likely to change the character of our single-family neighborhoods into a situation where these units become hotel rooms for Boston. The research also shows that where Airbnb use goes up, rents go up for the entire community to match the Airbnb prices, making rents less affordable for year-round residents. Increased Airbnb usage in the community can also lead to a shortage of housing because long-term rentals are taken off the market in favor of lucrative short-term rentals. This has already been well documented in Boston and New York City, and we need to make sure that it doesn't happen in Arlington as well. Unfortunately, Article 15 doesn't give Inspectional Services the tools they need to prevent accessory units from being converted into short-term rentals or to enforce this article. The Director of Inspectional Services, Michael Byrne, was concerned about this at our Residential Study Group meeting. He told us that enforcement would be, quote, "impossible," and that the article was, quote, "not going to be enforced." This is because Article 15 does not contain any provision for inspection of the accessory units. As it stands now, Inspectional Services would have no authority to inspect these units without a search warrant. A better practice would be to include a provision in the article on the right to inspect after reasonable notice, but that hasn't happened here. The Residential Study Group also discussed other problems with Article 15 that have not been corrected. I'm going to list some of them so you can see why this proposal is not ready and why it needs further review and modification. First, there's, there's no increased funding for Inspectional Services to make sure that the requirements are followed. Inspectional Services is so busy right now, they don't have the time or the staff to monitor websites to make sure that accessory units aren't being abused as Airbnb rentals. The better practice would be to provide Inspectional Services with resources for enforcement, but that hasn't happened here. In other municipalities, it's also common practice for the town to put regulations in place for short-term rentals at the same time that accessory dwelling units come into play, but that hasn't happened here. The regulation talks about the unit must be owner-occupied. What does that mean, to be owner-occupied? Can a housing corporation own a unit? Can an LLC or a corporation be an owner of a building? How would this work where one of the dwelling units must be the owner's principal resident? How do you even define owner in these situations? Other municipalities regulate this in part to prevent speculation from corporations renting out units, but that hasn't happened here. There also needs to be additional discussion about whether these units should be affordability restricted. The current plan does nothing to ensure affordability. Nearby communities that allow accessory dwelling units also do so on much larger lots than are common in Arlington. If accessory dwelling units are allowed here on lots with non-conforming setbacks, it will have more of an impact on neighbors than in other communities that do it, like Lexington, which requires a minimum 10,000-square-foot lot for an accessory dwelling unit. There's no such protection here. Article 15 also doesn't address parking at all. The accessory unit will create more demand for parking, but with no requirement to include additional off-street parking spots. Will this create more pressure to get rid of the overnight parking ban? Article 15 needs more study to make sure that we get it right, to avoid abuse from short-term rentals, to ensure proper enforcement, and to prevent unintended consequences. Let's put it off for a year so these concerns can be addressed, and the Residential Study Group and other stakeholders can evaluate it further. Please join me in voting no on Article 15. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pyle. Mr. Byrne, did you want to address the, your quote? Of course, Mr. Byrne was directly quoted. I'm going to give an opportunity to-
I apologize for your time. Michael Byrne, Director of Inspectional Services. Liz, I do recall at that meeting that I did say that. Since then, things have progressed, and we are an enforcement body, and whatever this body comes up with, we'll find a way of enforcing. If it's meeting, staff, Adam, Sandy, finance, have always been great with us, and we've figured out a way of getting things done. So, I mean, as of today, do I, do I feel it's, it's unenforceable? No, I do not. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Person right behind, Mr. Deist. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Brian Hasbrook from Precinct 9. I would like to speak in favor of this article, and my only misgiving is that it's too restrictive. And I think actually that should give many people some reassurance, because it would be very hard to, for most of us, with the houses we have at our limitations, to do this within our existing, with the existing footprint of the homes. And that's, that's a very strict requirement of this article. Now, having said that, I want to mention that in my life, I have benefited several times personally from accessory dwelling units. When I was a young adult, I lived in small efficiency apartments in graduate school and college, and when I was starting out in my career and I didn't have much money, and these small apartments probably would not be able to be built under modern codes pretty much anyplace. And I would, I would guess that quite a few of you, when you were younger, were in living situations which were like this. Now, fast forward to later on in my life, more recently, I have a brother and his family in Maine, and they bought an old antique house about five, six years ago, where they live in Maine, and the previous owner had built an accessory apartment for their elderly parents. So, my father, who was living in the same area, who was living in, in his house by himself independently, at some point got to the point in his life where he was too frail to be able to manage on his own. So, about three years ago, he moved into this accessory apartment that my brother and his family had. And I tell you, it was really wonderful, because my brother was able to keep an eye on him. The apartments were separate, they could have separate lives, but my father could get, get, you know, family looking after him very easily. And then a year ago, when the time came, when my father just was approaching the end of his life, they were able to bring hospice into this accessory apartment, and my father passed away in the comforts of his family. So, I'm telling you these personal stories because I think this, this opportunity can potentially affect a lot of people. And I, and I just want to encourage you to consider that. Personally, I'm less concerned about violations. You know, my brother, occasionally, they talk about Airbnb. It hasn't happened. They've had this house for, you know, five years now. The apartment's been vacant for, for a year. We have, we have restrictions in the article against that, and my, my feeling is that for many building codes, we kind of rely on people, we have to rely on the honest system a little bit, and, and I have faith in that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Handlin.
So, these are all the papers I didn't leave at home, and they weigh more than Mr. Leon's papers, I think. My name is Patrick Handlin. I'm from Precinct 5. I'm also a member of the, of the RSG. And if you look at the tape, I'm the one with the bright white hair who has talked at great length, which I won't do here. I supported the result of that, which was essentially to try to put things off a little bit longer, because there were a lot of questions. There weren't as many questions at that meeting that I recall as Ms. Pyle indicated here, but there were quite a few. And Mr. Byrne did make the statement that it was, would be impossible to enforce, which he no longer thinks is true. And that was also the first day that the Fire Chief had been aware of this, and in light of those two things, it was sort of difficult to push on. There were three main issues before the RSG. One is one that nobody has really talked much about today, because I think Valentine's Day 2019, drop dead date, pretty much eliminates the possibility that you'll build new houses, new tear downs in order to take advantage of this opportunity. So, that left the, leaves the question of, of Airbnb, short-term rentals. At the time, the ordinance that we had before us had only a 90-day requirement for the length of a lease, which was materially shorter. That has since gone to a year, which clearly is looking at a longer-term, a longer-term perspective. But there's an additional factor that is of considerable importance, and that is, at this very meeting, in another week or so, we will all consider a bylaw that will in fact regulate short-term rentals. And that bylaw will require registering the short-term rentals. It will have penalties in it, and it will also have a fee, incidentally, in case we're all worried about taxes and overrides, that if, in fact, there were a substantial number of them, we'd get some money from. So, that's an additional enforcement mechanism. You have in this proposal a series of certifications under penalties of perjury, which I will grant you as a last-ditch thing, because we don't really want to be prosecuting our fellow citizens in order to take advantage of that. But that certainly could happen in egregious situations. And we have a fairly strong series, set of enforcement mechanisms that the Inspectional Services Department can use. If you look at the zoning bylaw, in Section 3, they, it will, excuse me, it's, Section 3, they have a series of, of things by a complaint. The Inspectional Services has the authority to follow up on the complaint. If, in fact, it is found that this is out of compliance or violates- it has found that this is out of compliance or violates the conditions of a special permit. You can proceed in all of the ways that you can proceed with any other special permit that exists in the town of Arlington. Now, is that all perfect? Do we know that all that will come together and mean that there will be no violations? Well, I've never heard of a law where there are no violations. The question is really what kind of risk there is, and part of that answer is, 1.5 units a year? Come on. It's not that hard, and it's not that big a risk to take. Now, if we found with our experience that problems were emerging, we have the opportunity to do that, and I would hope that staff would be willing to come back with us. Ms. Ray has told me that a year or two would be all that's necessary to evaluate the implementation of all of this and to identify any problems that may occur. The kind of form that we are using is a form that is used in many, many ordinances. There are over, almost 70 in the Boston area alone. When I was appointed in Northern Virginia to a planning commission of a town considerably larger than this, we had this in my very first year, we adopted that, the ADU, and now the Fairfax County government has a special unit that advises people on how to put these in. Will it address our housing crisis much? No. Again, 1.5 units doesn't amount to very much. Is it primarily even intended to do that? I think the answer is not. It's primarily intended to give people flexibility to have caretakers in their house, perhaps have college students, perhaps to have college students that occasionally do babysitting, to have, deal with family situations and so forth. And I think that the risk is worth taking. It's a small risk, and I think they're worth, is worth taking to make the town just a little bit more humane, particularly for senior citizens of which I am proudly one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jamison, I think you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. Am I correct that over the several years that we've had reviewed this and said no, and reviewed this and said no, that the ARB has listened to the comments and this is the product of listening to the public?
Is that a rhetorical question?
Mr. Burnell says yes from a distance.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. If I understand the requirements, and I'm going by memory because I don't have a piece of paper in front of me, this requires a one-year lease. Is that correct? I believe it requires a one-year lease.
Yes.
It requires that no additional parking is added.
That's correct on both counts.
And an annual recertification.
That's correct.
Okay. Next, perhaps the manager, since the assessor is not here, could comment on, would he believe that the value of this property would increase and hence we would get additional tax dollars from it to fund these inspections, et cetera?
I'm chaplain town manager. I did have a conversation with the assessor prior to town meeting beginning, and he does feel as though if there's improvements made to a structure based on this, there would be an increase in the assessment of the property.
Thank you very much. Maybe you can, no, no, never mind. Would this, would these improvements require that these ADUs have both a kitchen and a bath? Someone in the audience says yes.
Yes. We're getting, we're getting head nods. Yes.
We are having a group moment here. The target audience, I think we can understand parents. Mr. Bryan gave a very nice story. I've thought about that. My father unfortunately passed away a couple of years ago, but you could see how, especially if you walk in basement like mine, something like this would be very helpful to have a parent nearby. It's always nice to be there when they pass away, like I was so lucky to be. Let's see. Lastly, I want to make a general comment on these, this article and the other articles we're dealing with. This is the master plan that this body approved two years ago after several years of work by a count, I believe, of 141 to 36 or something like that, in that these articles are directly, are a direct response to what we asked our board, the redevelopment board, consisting of volunteers who work very hard to deliver to us. Okay? So, you know, we have a lot of different committees that provide input to this meetings. We have lots of reports, okay, and we should be appreciative and respectful of their expertise and what they're trying to make, they're trying to make Arlington a better town. But we continue, year after year after year, to say we don't want development in Arlington. So we said that we want an inclusive town, and we vote time and time again to say no. So you're either going to be inclusive and vote that way with these types of articles, or we're going to have to fess up to the fact that we want to be a gated community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I urge approval of this article. Thank you.
Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. Just want to say, there is nothing in current law that forbids someone from having their parent, their child, whoever, living in their house. All the current law provides that you can't have a separate kitchen. So, some of these stories are really not very relevant to this article. I'd like, those of you who have been here for more than a year, may recall that in January of last year, we voted for a recodification of the zoning bylaw, and it was a rushed process. It was said, rather than the three-year process we had back in the mid-'70s, it was rushed through in a few months, and had to be done very important, and I'm not disputing its importance, et cetera, but I wanted to read you a couple of sections from the law, which was promoted to us by the redevelopment board and by the planning and community development department. This is the Section 5.4.1. I'm going to read Part A, 1 and 2. R0, large lot, single-family district. Large lot, single-family district has the lowest residential density of all districts and is generally served by local streets only. The town discourages intensive land uses, uses that would detract from the single-family residential character of these neighborhoods, and uses that would otherwise interfere with the intent of this bylaw. That's R0. R1, single-family district. The predominant uses in R1 are single-family dwellings and public land and buildings. The town discourages intensive land uses, uses that would detract from the single-family residential character of these neighborhoods, and uses that would otherwise interfere with the intent of this bylaw. So that's what the law is at this moment. And if I can't understand how the redevelopment board put forward Article 15 without first asking us to approve some amendment that would eviscerate these two descriptions of the residential units. And I think if we're going to, if you want to enact something like this, then we should put a footnote on the, those two sections I just read, that would say something to the effect that, well, if the ZBA decides that your neighbors, one or more of your neighbors wants to turn their house into a two-family house, we can permit it, and because in Arlington, we prefer to have a rule of men rather than a rule of laws. I think that's not a good policy, and I urge you, please vote no on Article 15. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Slickman.
Paul Slickman, Precinct 9. My concern is, is that we have forces at work right now, such as Airbnb, Uber, Lyft, who thrive on disrupting local regulations, in that they are setting transportation policy, they are setting land use policy, and they are aggressive and combative in this effort. As regulators of land use in this town, I'm very concerned at the architecture of what we're planning to do, not initially, but maybe a couple of years out, maybe with a different owner, who doesn't certify under the terms of this bylaw, might try to go and squeeze an Airbnb use into such an architectural setup. We do have before us, but we haven't debated or enacted it yet, Article 34, which would set us on a path to regulating Airbnb. Given the number of prospective units that might be developed under this proposal, which are, is a very small number, I think it would be prudent for us to adopt Article 34, enact it, see how it works, and ensure that Article 34, or whatever our short-term rental bylaw is, is effective against Airbnb before we create architecture which would be perfect for implementing a short-term rental. Thank you.
35.
35. 35. It's a future article.
34 is yours.
Oh, 34. Yeah, 34 is mine.
Yeah, 35 is mine. Sorry, sorry.
Mr. McCabe, you are next on the list.
Mark McCabe, Precinct 2. I stand to terminate debate on Article 15 in all matters before.
We have a motion to terminate debate. It's been seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed?
No.
In my opinion, it is a two-thirds vote. We have before us a recommended vote of the ARB, as printed in their report. All in favor, please vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no as soon as we get the green light. So go ahead and vote, one for yes, two for no. It's a vote of 137 in the affirmative, 82 in the negative. It is two-thirds. Wait a second. 88, 82, 100, that's not a... You need two-thirds. It should be 164, so no, actually, two-thirds is 66%.
147.
Yeah. So it's, it is a negative vote. It is not two-thirds. The vote does not carry, so ignore that little pass. That closes Article 15 and brings us to Article 17. Signs.
All right. Signs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andrew Benel, Chair of the ARB, Precinct 21. This is a discussion of the new sign bylaw put before town meeting this year. This was an intensive process that went on over the last year to bring the town sign bylaw into alignment with state and federal law as well as existing Arlington bylaws. Master Plan zoning audit that took place over the last several years identified some concerns with the sign regulations. Many of what had been in place in the existing zoning bylaw was not in compliance with state and federal law and left the town open for a number of questions and liabilities. Discovered that there was a need to update the sign regulations, and last year, there was an approval for some funds to hire a consultant to go through and do that, provide technical expertise. You've all been provided with a copy of the new sign bylaw that has been provided. The purpose of this was to develop new sign regulations for the town of Arlington that were consistent with state and federal law and the recommendations put forth in the master plan, to bring them consistent with recent pertinent and potentially confusing case law. We've done that. We want to include standards that reflect different aesthetic, dimensional, and material needs of different property types and geographies, recognizing that Arlington is not uniform in any way from one end to the other, but a sign bylaw has to be. We want to make sure that it's straightforward and easy to use, clear, concise, and well-illustrated so that the examples given within the sign bylaw are easily followable by anyone wishing to establish a sign in town. Primary concern here is a Supreme Court case that came down in 2015, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, which related to temporary directional signs relating to a qualifying event. What that means is not much to people in here, but we had to comply with it. So basically, the sign bylaw and signs have to be content-neutral. You can't regulate by message or content of the signs. You can't regulate religious content, or religious event, for example, differently than a community event or town meeting, for example. Time, manner, and place regulations are allowed as long as they are not based on the content of the sign thereof. You can regulate residential sign usage versus non-residential sign usage. We wanted to minimize the exemptions to the rules because that becomes more content-based over time. So what we've done here is put together a clear, concise sign bylaw. It's a long document, but it is a very good, concise document. So, carrying on further with Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, want to make sure that everything aligns with those content-neutral restrictions so that we are not delineating, again, between religious uses, between commercial uses, between governmental uses, et cetera. Hang on. So, content-based regulations. What does the sign say? Message determines if it stays up or down, or if it meets applicable regulations. Content-neutral regulations are time, place, and manner. That's really what we're concerned with here. It's a political sign versus a freestanding sign, really. So, we have put together a specific organization here. We have general provisions which outline what's allowed in town and how each use is considered and applied by the department and by building inspectors, and then procedures as far as permanent sign permits, which exist already, temporary sign permits, which, again, exist already. These are just being recodified to match up with existing state and federal law and signed special permits. We're also outlining certain restrictions as far as location, certain signs that are prohibited, certain display restrictions. Certain prohibited signs are those more as far as style. Again, we're not regulating content here. And then general requirements for signs, how big, where they can be, how long they can stay up, what they can look like. This is tough to see, but the important part from this slide is that zoning districts were specifically organized into sign districts. We've established sign districts that match each zoning district throughout town, and if you remember the map from earlier this evening and Monday night, there are a lot of different zoning districts throughout town. Now, made sure that each sign district is allowed certain types of signs. Getting at the problem of current sign regulations where adjacent properties are allowed very different kinds of signs. Now, it's based on a zoning district as opposed to the use of a building. And then each type of allowed sign is described in a table within this document with a specific requirement such as area, placement, illumination, et cetera, for easy and quick reference. In most cases, the same standards apply as to sign, although in some cases, there have been tweaks to the more, to be more consistent with current trends in design and fabrication. We are allowing portable sandwich board signs. I think I started at five minutes. This is a change from the existing regulations, but inclusion of these types of signs was recommended as part of the process. And then signs that are currently non-conforming, are legal non-conforming, and they can stay, but it describes in what cases that sign might need to be brought into conformity should the property owner wish to change. should the property owner wish to change. So, there was a recommendation as we went through this process that the sign bylaw should remain in the zoning bylaw. That's the intent of this article that you're being asked to approve tonight. The analysis found a duplicative section on billboards in the town bylaw, which is part of this motion here. And then Article twenty-six supports the consolidation of those sign regulations and does away with that existing town bylaw. So I hope you will all vote for this. It's, it's a way to streamline the sign process, make things more clear, concise, and create a standard layer of expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benel. Mr. Schlickman? I'll start you at seven minutes.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct Nine. The law, the bylaw proposal bans a couple of things which, to me, are unclear of what they mean. Can I ask what a bandit sign is?
Erin Swerko, Assistant Director for Planning and Community Development. A bandit sign is a type of illegal sign that is placed without any review or approval.
So, like the student painters who have signs all around? That's what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, what is a cabinet sign?
A cabinet sign is an older style of sign which is designed to be wholly contained in a box, essentially. So, all sides of the three-dimensional sign are contained. It's usually internally illuminated, and whatever the text is, is on the sides of the cabinet, which is the sign.
Do we have any of those in the town now?
We do.
Can you just describe one so we know what it is?
Yep, so they, they generally look like they are placed on the side of the building where it's projecting off of the building because there is a dimension to it. They can be styled as a bracket sign. There is a block, I'm forgetting the specific address, but there is a block of signs where there are cabinet signs as bracket signs in that block of businesses.
Could you tell me where so we can identify what it is?
It's on Mass Ave, just a bit north from here. I'm sorry, I can't think of the address.
North, no. Are you thinking of Brattle Square?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the box signs with the, the plastic front and the illumination in the middle?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything in this proposal that conflicts with the current dark sky bylaw or the provisions that might be adopted later in this meeting?
I don't believe so. I believe that the illumination standards require that the sign, the type of illumination needs to be turned off in the evening outside of business hours. It also encourages downward-directed illumination as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Good evening, Christian Klein, Precinct Ten. I have two administrative amendments. One is on, if you are following along, on page sixty-six at the very bottom. The last paragraph says, "If the building inspector determines that, that is separate." So, just, we just only need the one that. And the other is, so I am the vice chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Currently, special permits in town are heard by two bodies. One is the Zoning Board of Appeals, the other is the Arlington Redevelopment Board. Principally, the Zoning Board of Appeals deals with the RNOT through our two districts, and the ARB deals with the main thoroughfares in town and the larger districts. The Zoning Board of Appeals sees very, very few signs ever, and the ARB sees a lot of them. But the way this is currently written, some would go to us and some would go to them. And so, we voted last night at our meeting that we would like to consolidate sign reviews under the ARB for consistency and to make it a little more sane. So, I submitted that administratively last night to, to the Planning Board and to the moderator. They agree that, and counsel, and they agree that this can be handled administratively. And so, if, basically what it is under, on the following page at the bottom of sixty-seven, where it's the sign special permit, section one and section two, where it says, "A sign special permit may be granted by the Board of Appeals or Arlington Redevelopment Board as applicable," it would just be, "A sign special permit may be granted by the Arlington Redevelopment Board." And so that's what we are requesting administratively. Thank you.
We have a copy of just the one up here.
It should be both in the same.
Oh, they're both one and two?
Both in there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not the first, not the that-that, that's not up there, but the CBA ones are both up there.
Do we get the that-that one too? You can find it, bring it to us by the end of the meeting.
I will write up that-that becomes that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the ARB is in total agreement with these administrative changes? All right, so we will just make those administratively as opposed to voting on them. Mr. Berkowitz?
Bill Berkowitz, Precinct Eight. Can I, I have a question about scope and also a question about enforcement. Regarding scope, I'd like to see if we could clarify the meaning of band, applicability of bandit signs. So for example, is a sign placed by a service company such as a painter, a landscaper, a roofer, and left after the service has been completed, is that considered a bandit sign and therefore illegal?
Erin Swerko, Assistant Director. That would be a sign that has overstayed its temporary permit, so therefore it needed to be removed. It would not necessarily be considered a bandit sign. A bandit sign would have received no approval to start with.
But that's such a sign that we're talking about here would be prohibited, is that correct?
The, it would be prohibited because it overstayed the duration that it would be allowed to be up.
And regarding enforcement of this provision, would that go through? If there's a violation, would that go, would a citizen report that to inspectional services, for example?
A citizen could. Inspection services would enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman behind Mr. Cook in the teal green shirt. Yep, that guy, right behind Bill. Hello. Did you have your hand up? I thought you did. Okay. Mr. Jelkut?
Pass.
Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct Eight. The revision of the sign bylaw, I'm sure a matter of crucial importance to the town's planning and zoning, was the only item in this whole Arlington Redevelopment Board agenda that was discussed by the zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw working group, of which I am a member. And we, we talked to the consultant, we had a couple of meetings about it, and, and the consultant produced this sort of very large and complex law. A question I asked at that time related to, I'm sure you must have seen it, half a block from where we are now, west on Mass Ave, in front of one of those three antique houses in, in the next block between Academy Street, Jason Street, there is a, sort of a curvy pole, and hanging on it is sort of a weirdly shaped banner, and it's been waving in the breeze for quite a few months now. I believe that kind of sign is not legal under our present sign bylaw, and I, I believe I was told that it would not be legal under the old sign, the new sign bylaw. So I'm wondering if, if I'm correct in my beliefs about the inappropriateness of that sign under our rules, if that is going to be enforced. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne, you going to enforce that wayward sign?
Good evening, Michael Byrne, Director of Inspection Services. Yes, actually, with that sign in particular, we did receive a complaint. They took it down, and as what happens in many cases, they go right back up a couple weeks later, and we just, the chase is on, but we do our best. Yes, yes, we will enforce that.
It's up today.
Okay. John, please send us a complaint. We'll gladly get on it.
Ma'am, yes. Nope, nope, not you.
Hi, Samantha Dutra from Precinct Twenty. I would like to move to terminate the debate and all matters proceeding.
Close enough. Good job. We have a motion to terminate debate on Article seventeen and all matters there under. All in favor of termination of debate, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it. We now have a force recommended vote of the Arlington Redevelopment Board for a new sign bylaw. All in favor, please press one when it comes up. Go ahead. Wow. Please press one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote. Wait, vote, two-hundred-and-seven in the affirmative, eight in the negative is this vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article seventeen. Two-oh-eight, two-oh-seven. That closes Article seventeen and brings us to Article eighteen. Floodplain zoning districts, floodplain.
Mr. Moderator, if I might present Articles eighteen and nineteen together, but I won't require any longer than the original seven minutes.
Sure.
Save everybody a little time, getting late. Thank you. I want to note that there's an inconsistency in the report from the Arlington Redevelopment Board, although we worked with the Conservation Commission in establishing these zoning bylaws. They are, have chosen to remain neutral in matters of zoning and did communicate to us, that to us via letter during this process. However, we did work with them to establish these. Articles eighteen and nineteen regard the floodplain district and the inland-wetland district described in the zoning bylaw. These were identified as inconsistent during recodification. For the most part, these corrections strengthen the existing bylaw and bring the zoning bylaw into comity with the Conservation Commission's requirements, which are consistent with state law. Corrections are fairly minor. They include correctly referring to the Town of Arlington bylaw for wetlands protection, making the section internally consistent with the zoning bylaw, and again, CONCOM regulations, and correcting and updating incorrect and outdated section references. Does not change the review process of the CONCOM in any way, simply strengthens the zoning bylaw to match what the CONCOM already does. So I hope you'll vote yes on this. Thank you.
Anyone want to discuss floodplains? Seeing none, we're going to go right to a vote. All in favor of the recommended vote of the ARB on Article eighteen? Please, we get ready for the vote. Vote one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote, two-hundred-and-fourteen, the affirmative and two in the negative. It's the vote, and I so declare it, and it passes. That closes Article eighteen and brings us to Article nineteen. Anyone wish to discuss? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote, as soon as Mr. Lathwood is. Go ahead and vote, one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote, two-hundred-and-ten, yeses, one no. It's a vote, and I so declare it, and that closes Article nineteen and brings us to Article twenty. Article twenty. Zoning bylaw amendment, review of religious and educational uses. Mr. Benel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article twenty is the Dover Amendment. Andrew Benel, Chair of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. The Dover Amendment refers to certain protections that religious, nonprofit, educational, and childcare facilities receive under the Massachusetts zoning act, which is general law, Chapter forty-eight, Section Three, which are not clearly prescribed in the zoning bylaw. The bylaw appears to indicate that a special permit is required or the use is prohibited. What this bylaw intends to do is add a simple section to the existing zoning bylaw, saying that they're permitted by right of accessory to a use, and just to clarify and codify an administrative review process consistent with Chapter forty-eight. It's a fairly straightforward regulation that brings the zoning bylaw into compliance with state law, and I hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Anyone wish to discuss Article twenty, the Dover Amendment? Sir?
Mustafa Varglu, Precinct Ten. This might be a foolish question, but maybe somebody can clarify this for me. So when I read this on the second page of the ARB report, under Section three-point-five, it simply says, "The Arlington Board shall adopt rules and regulations and requirements of GLC forty-eight, et cetera." And then everything under that is dormitory, blah, 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 see Section three-point-five, which is actually inside. So, in sense, are you essentially circularly referring to yourself where you've put in that this is the state law we're referring to? I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand if this makes sense. It doesn't make sense to me as a person, but am I, am I so a lawyer?
I appreciate your candor. Yes, that is. You take this from the ARB to establish rules and regulations similar to the environmental design review process that would include uses for religious and other uses that would apply under the Dover Amendment.
And so it works when it's within itself and it refers to itself?
That's right.
Because it refers out to the state law?
Yes, so it refers back to itself.
Okay, thank you. I was puzzled.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Deist?
John Deist, Precinct Thirteen. I have a question on, of the statements on page fifty-one, where it says, "Educational or religious purposes." Education, nonprofit?
Ms. Ray?
Do you have to say that, or is it just implicit?
Nonprofit use only, and it has to be certified by the building inspector.
But it, but it doesn't say so here.
It is actually clear under forty-eight, Section Three of the law, and it actually is stated in the uses, in the earlier section of that section of the bylaw.
So how is one assured then that, in other words, in order to become, how do, how do you assure that a profit-making educational organization is not included here?
There are two steps in the process. The first step is that the organization or entity has to be certified by the building inspector as being a nonprofit use.
I see.
And so that would be certified by the building inspector.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jameson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, Precinct Twelve. I'm in favor of this article. I just want to comment on the inclusion of the Mass General Law reference. Several years ago, when we were trying to increase the parameters of the recycling committee's bylaw, the then-town council, Mr. Marr, after we had carefully written out everything that we wanted to cover, said it would be much smarter just to reference rules and regulations. This is, this is analogous to, that the DPW in that case would provide, and therefore we wouldn't have to constantly change the bylaws to make them consistent with whatever the state does. So this is, this is a good idea that makes our work less in the future, because if the state changed... state changes this provision, the ARB will automatically change that, and we won't have to pass an amendment to a bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the recommended vote of the ARB as printed in their report, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. No, we're doing Article 20. Here we go. So we're going to start voting again? Yeah, re-initiate voting. So go ahead. It's an affirmative vote. 207, affirmative, and 4 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 21 and brings us to Article, excuse me, that ends Article 20 and brings us to Article 21. Bicycle parking. Hey, it's not Mr. Bonnell, it's somebody else.
David Watson, Arlington Redevelopment Board and town meeting member for Precinct 5. Those of you who know me won't be surprised to see me up here talking about bicycle parking. I'm a lifelong bicyclist and the former executive director of the Massachusetts Bicycle Coalition, and currently a consultant specializing in transportation policy, particularly around bicycle and pedestrian issues. So the master plan actually does talk about bicycle parking. And those of you who ride around town and occasionally have trouble finding bike parking or encounter bad bike racks will understand that we need to do a better job, and the master plan recognized that. Our current standards are tied to the number of car parking spaces, which, when you think about it, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. If we're trying to reduce reliance on automobiles, we'll be reducing the number of car parking spaces while at the same time, we're trying to increase bicycle use, but we'd be reducing bicycle spaces under the current way that we calculate them. So clearly, we needed to change something. So our goal here is to ensure that we are actually providing appropriate bike parking capacity and doing so in alignment with best practices for bicycle parking. So just to review what our current standards are, we actually do require bicycle parking for developments with eight or more vehicle parking spaces. And the current standard is one bicycle parking space for every 15 car parking spaces. So it's not really very much car parking, bicycle parking space, rather. And it's a minimum of two spaces, but not more than 20 spaces. So as you get into larger developments, you can see that you could easily be in a position where you'd max out and not be providing enough bicycle parking. It also doesn't provide a whole lot of guidance for what kind of bicycle parking you need to provide, other than the size of a bicycle parking space, which should be six feet by two feet, and that it should be separated from vehicle parking. There are also a few exempt uses that aren't required to provide bicycle parking. The new proposal would establish standards for both long and short-term bicycle parking, recognizing that some people need to be in a location for longer periods of time, and other people are just visiting briefly. It would also allow for reductions based on certain parameters that the ARB would be able to take into account during the special permit process. And you'll see an excerpt from the chart in the proposed bylaw there that shows how the bike parking spaces are calculated. But at the heart of it is for apartment buildings, we would be requiring 1.5 bike parking spaces per dwelling unit. So we would be decoupling bike parking from car parking and coupling it to the number of dwelling units. And we ran a number of scenarios involving, should we calculate it based on the number of bedrooms or other ideas, and realized that this was a reasonable metric for calculating it. And there are also calculations included in the table for all kinds of other uses that are also listed in our use tables in the bylaw. So in addition to requiring the number of bike parking spaces, it also specifies more about what the bike parking itself should consist of. So this will lead to better bike parking, so that you can more safely and securely store your bicycle, and I won't go through this in great detail. Couple of things I wanted to cover, though, is that longer-term parking will be covered, it will be secure, and it will be protected from the elements and inside or near to the building. Shorter-term parking could be outside or adjacent to the building. And it sets forth some things that are unacceptable. So some of the bad bike racks would no longer be acceptable in town. Going the wrong way. Help me out, I need the last slide. Okay, just a few quick examples, just to show you what the impact of the changes would be in terms of the number of spaces. These are three projects. The first, 925 to 927 Mass Ave, under the existing bylaw, they would have been required to provide no bike parking spaces, but the ARB actually required them to provide secured enclosed bike parking for at least six bikes and an exterior bike rack for businesses. Under the proposed bike bylaw, they would be required to provide the bike parking listed there. 887 Mass Ave, similarly, under the current bylaw, no bike parking. We did require them to provide a bike room and an exterior bike rack. Again, the new proposed bylaw would require them to provide bike parking. I want to jump down to the Brigham's development, because that's a big one. Existing bylaw required only 12 spaces. The new bylaw would require a lot more spaces, and that seems like a really big number. But remember, that's adjacent to the bike path, and it's a lot of units with multiple bedrooms, so it's not, it's not necessarily that large a number. And I'm wrapping it up. And it is within the ARB's power to take into account the circumstances of a development and reduce that number if we find that the calculation doesn't make sense. So I urge you to vote in support of Article 21 for better bike parking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Revellak?
Steve Revellak, 111 Sunnyside Ave, Precinct 1. As someone who's made in form of transportation is a bicycle, I really appreciate this. Three things in this article I like in particular are decoupling the bicycle parking requirements from the automotive parking requirements. And there was a second thing. Don't you, so decoupling that, having the distinction between long-term bicycle parking and short-term bicycle parking. And the third is a requirement or the constraint that racks which are designed to support a bicycle by its front wheel only shall not meet the requirements of this section. I think that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I live in a building that has 47 units and 54 parking spaces. Under the current bylaw, we're required to have, if we're being built now, we'd be required to have 65. And when I moved in many years ago, parking was always tight, and if somebody hung up a notice of a parking spot for rent, it would be taken down immediately. Parking cars has become much less of an issue in my building. Parking bicycles has become much more of an issue. The management company has to regularly go through and ask us to put tags on our bikes to make sure that there are no bikes there that don't belong there right now, so they can cut the ones out and remove them. They've added bike racks, those are full, too. Making a minimum bicycle requirement to go along with residential units and multifamily buildings in this town with this bike path makes a ton of sense, and I commend the ARB for proposing this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Peter Howard, Precinct 10. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Many of you know that I'm a frequent bicyclist, too, and I find that very often, the bike racks have room for me. It's very seldom that I have to compete for a space. It would be very nice to have more bike racks. My question is, is the town going to make this new idea retroactive? And so, how does it expect the various owners to fund it?
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. No, it would not be retroactive, so you would not need to bring your building to compliance with this new bylaw. It would be anything new going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. I think this is a really good idea. As I probably led on earlier, I think bicycling is a good thing for our town, and anything we can do to encourage more people to bike around it instead of drive around it, I think we should encourage. I just want a little clarification about, I know that there's a clear distinction between long-term and short-term bicycle parking, and what I was a little uncertain about, even though it might be in the, in the, in the words there, I didn't quite get it out of the words. Is there anything in the regulations that would prohibit a developer who is complying with these rules from co-locating the short-term parking that is designated to satisfy the residential requirement and the commercial requirement in the same place? And the same question for the long-term parking, is there, are there any different requirements that would make it kind of like, lead to silly things, like there's one bicycle fixture outside, but there's two bicycle fixtures around the corner outside because they're not supposed to be in the same place? Anything you can say, or anything anybody can say about that would be welcome.
Jennifer Rate, Director of Planning and Community Development. So no, they can be co-located, first of all. Second of all, the, the other issue that you mentioned, I think that at the time of an application being reviewed, the ARB would look at where the locations would be, so that would be identified at that time and then be codified in the decision during the special permit process.
So just to summarize, whatever the approval for, the sum of the required spaces that needed to be outside and the sum that needed to be long-term inside, they would, whatever that sum was required, could all be met at the same time with the same location?
At the same location.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Bean, Precinct 8. This may not be quite within the scope, but it's a question I've had for a long time. What do we do? Who do we call for bicycles that have been parked somewhere for a long, long time? And it seems to be permanent bicycle parking, especially broken bicycles.
I don't know if that's Inspection Services or Public Works. Mr. Byrne, if there's an abandoned bike for many months, do we call you? We're not sure who to call. Oh, Adam, we call Adam.
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. You can't call me, but I think we could, we should start with the police department, who could then coordinate with Public Works, and if we can, demon abandoned, we could have Public Works remove it.
There are some that have been there literally for years, of course.
Yeah, so I, it would be, it's a tricky process to officially determine it's abandoned, but I think that the police can problem-solve, determine and abandon, and then DPW can dispose of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now that my question's been answered, I move to terminate debate on the article.
Too bad. Can't do that. Maybe the next person will. Mr. Yontel? Tim Moore, did you have your hand up? No, someone back there did.
Tim Moore, Kaiya Yontar, Precinct 7. I call the question. I move to terminate debate.
Terminate debate on Article 21 and all matters there under.
On Article 21 and all matters relevant, blah, blah, blah. Yes.
Yes. We have a motion to terminate debate on Article 21. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? It's a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it. That brings us ready for a vote. All in favor of the recommended vote of the ARB as put forth in their printed report under Article 21, please press 1 for yes and 2 for no. It's an affirmative vote. 217, the affirmative, 7 in the negative. That ends the vote. It's seeing, it's 11 o'clock. We're going to call for motions for reconsideration. Mr. Tosti has moved for reconsideration on 49, 55, 66, 67, 69, 70, 71, 73, 74, 78, 79, 59, 69, 76. Any other motions for reconsideration? O'Connor on 15, did you vote on the prevailing side? Okay. Any other notices of reconsideration? He must have voted on the prevailing side. Let me just take, I got all of yours. Move to adjourn, we'll see you on Monday. All in favor, bye-bye.